I call this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order, Monday, July 9, 2018, 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Chairman.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council now approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero, agenda is approved. We're now down to the invocation. Councilmember Robinson, please.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come together to say thank you for allowing us to come to another Fairfield County Council meeting. We're asking you to bless the decisions that we've made, bless the decision that we haven't made as of yet. We're asking you to look upon us as Fairfield County as one, so that we can make this county great as it should be. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next is the approval of minutes. We've got two tonight. One is a regular meeting from June 25, 2018, a special meeting from June 27, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that these minutes be approved as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero, those minutes are approved. No public presentations tonight. First public comment session, Mrs. Davis.
We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the COG.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. Those of you who know me probably realize that I'm a big QBQ guy, question behind the question, accountability. And I would just like to thank the COG for making a presentation tonight, and I appreciate them coming to our meeting. And I would like to hear from them as part of their presentation, and maybe it already is, is what have they done for Fairfield County in the past year, specifically? In fact, all speakers that come before us representing organizations should answer that. So thank QBQ, thank personal accountability, what has the COG done for us in the past year, specifically? Thank you, have a good day. And, ooh, look at the time.
We'll talk to you again in a minute, Randy.
See you soon.
We're now down to public hearings. Item A is an ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to add new fees for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. We'll open this public hearing at 6:02 PM, Monday, July 9, 2018. Mrs. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
One speaker, Mr. Randy Bright.
I appreciate that, Jeff. You usually take the words out of my mouth, anyway. Which, I'm sorry, which public hearing was this? I gotta get my speeches.
New fees.
Huh? New fees? Alright. I can only handle so many speeches a night. New fees. Specifically, what fees? Why? How much? Anytime you hear new fees, new taxes, you get a little leery and you become very inquisitive. Because that impacts our lives as much as anything when you take money, when the government or anybody takes money away from us. And who does that impact the most? Those who can afford it the least, the lower income. So I hope you have great justification and reason for new fees. So just remember what newspaper reporters talk about when they write a story. We want to hear who, what, when, where, and why these new fees. Details, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else sign to speak?
Alright, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, 6:03 PM, Monday, July 9, 2018. Item B is an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, and authorizing the supplemental appropriation of funds. We'll open this public hearing at 6:04 PM, Monday, July 9, 2018. Mrs. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
One speaker, Mr. Randy Bright.
I got this topic. Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. Has anything changed in the budget from the last presentation? I guess that's my biggest question. What specifically has anything changed? And the word supplemental, I know we use that all the time, so that implies something that may have changed, or we made a supplement to it. And supplements are good as far as health is concerned. Sometimes they're not so good. So if you can address or discuss in detail any changes to the budget since the last public meeting, that would be most informative for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else sign to speak?
No one else signed.
Alright, we will close this public hearing at 6:05 PM, Monday, July 9, 2018. Next is ordinances, resolutions, and orders. We have a few for tonight. Item A is second reading on ordinance number 700, an ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to add new fees for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council provides second reading to ordinance number 700. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Roof?
Certainly, Councilmember Roof, I'd be glad to. Specifically, what we're adding as far as new fees, we have tried to restructure how we did fees in general as far as the way they're included in our budget. Well, they used to be scattered throughout our budget. We're trying to consolidate them all onto one fee schedule, which makes it easier should we have to adjust or amend. It also makes it easier for everyone to understand, both council, myself, and the public, if they're all located in one place. But specifically, we're amending, in this instance, to add in a couple user fees. They're not blanket fees, they're not fees that are charged to everyone. They're only fees that are charged to the people who use those services. And specifically, the services in question here are animal control. We have a dog running at large fee of $25. If we have to go out and get someone's dog who they have let run at large, then we can charge the owner $25. We also have several new fees associated with our wood chipping facility. Again, this is a fee if you want to use the services to dump. We're having a lot of commercial people who are coming in and dumping. We think they should pay. They're making money off of the service that we provide, so I think, again, it's fair for them to pay a fee. So we're doing permit fees of $15, which is a required annual fee for someone who's a commercial operator coming in and using the wood chipping site. Then we have a single ax truck load of $20 per load, a dump truck or single ax axle truck with trailer of $30 per load, and then a tandem dump truck or larger comes in at $40 per load. So those are the new fees that are getting added in.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other discussion or questions concerning ordinance number 700?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Robinson.
This fee is not on here, but I was curious, would administration know the fee for recreation rental?
I would have to pull all those fees. I don't have them in front of me, but I can pull and get those to you.
My concern was, I received this maybe probably about an hour before I came here. You have some citizens that want to utilize recreation for actual recreation, and some are concerned that the fee isn't high enough due to tying up the ability to play basketball and walk.
You talking about the rental fee?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it is $25 an hour, if I'm not mistaken. And I wouldn't disagree with the assessment, personally.
Okay. I know we are still in the beginning stages of revamping our rec department, which it is better than what it was, I'd say. It's just something for us to think about later on down the road.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Alright, at this time, we've had a motion made and properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero. Second reading is provided to ordinance number 700. Second reading now on ordinance number 702, an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, and authorizing the supplemental appropriation of funds. Do we have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council provides second reading to ordinance number 702. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
It is amending the budget to add in those fees that we just discussed. In order to accept those fees, we have to have them in our budget, both recognize them as revenue and then as expenditure. So we're modifying the budget to do that, to accommodate.
Alright, any other questions, discussion on ordinance number 702? Alright, a motion has been made and properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero, 702 is provided with second reading. We're now down to item C, second reading on ordinance number 703. This is an ordinance to amend the master agreement governing the I-77 corridor regional industrial park buying between Richland County, South Carolina, and Fairfield County, South Carolina, to expand boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Richland County, Project Rain, and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council provides second reading now to ordinance number 703. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Goins.
Yes, would appreciate for the public if there could be an explanation.
Yes, this follows an economic incentive program that the state has designed. Basically, there's something called a fee in lieu of taxes that counties can offer that reduces an industrial manufacturer's assessment ratio from a 10 and 1/2 percent down to a 6 percent. But the beginning of that process requires them to be in what's called a multi-county park arrangement between two counties. You can't qualify for a fee in lieu of unless you are designated to be in one of these multi-county parks. We have an agreement with Richland County where we share revenues. When they want to have someone given a fee in lieu of, they start by giving them this multi-county park designation, which we also have to approve. And so that's what's happening here. We're expanding their park to include another piece of property that then they can offer an incentive to a new industry. We would then typically get a 1 percent fee off of that from their taxes that would come to our county.
Any other questions or comments on second reading for ordinance number 703? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero. Second reading is provided to ordinance number 703. We're now down to item D, first reading by title only, so no discussion. On this one is ordinance number 704. This is an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing the I-77 corridor regional industrial park buying between Richland County, South Carolina, and Fairfield County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Richland County, Lorik Place Apartment Project, and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
Right, and it's been moved and properly seconded that council provide first reading to ordinance number 704. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, first reading is provided to ordinance number 704. We have another item for first reading by title only, ordinance number 705. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution of the amended and restated master agreement governing the I-77 corridor regional industrial park buying between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Richland County, South Carolina, confirming the boundaries of the I-77 corridor regional industrial park and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chair. Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council provide first reading to ordinance number 705. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, first reading is given to ordinance number 705. We have board and commission minutes for tonight, two of those, library board and hospital board. You receive those minutes in your packet unless there are questions, comments, or specific ones. If we can, please do these together. Do we have a motion?
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council approved the library and hospital board minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, those minutes are approved. Board and commission appointments, we have one for tonight. This is the Old English Tourism District Board, Charles Rowdy Harris from District 2. Do we have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded to appoint Mr. Charles Rowdy Harris from District 2 to the Old English Tourism District Board. Do we have any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that appointment is given. We are now down to old business. There is none, no new business. County administrators report, Mr. Taylor, please.
First item I have up is Mr. Gregory Sprouse. We have him here with us tonight with the Central Midlands Council of Government to give us a report, a general report and overview of the COG and what they do, and more specifically to discuss CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, and the 208 Water Plan.
Thank you. Really appreciate y'all having me here this evening to talk about the COG programs. I have a PowerPoint presentation to have some slides that help illustrate some of the things that I'll be talking about. And as I go along, I will try to address the question that was posed under the public comment period, and telling you about some of the things that we've done with Fairfield County over the past year. So to begin with, just want to give you a little bit, do I have a remote clicker? Okay, so if you go to, I'm going to give you a little bit of overview of the COG, what our mission is, our program areas, and then, as Mr. Taylor said, go directly into talking about our community and economic development programs, and then end up with a discussion of our 208 Water Quality Management Program, which I think has some implications on some of the water and sewer stuff that the county's been working on. So to start off on the next slide, the mission of the agency, I always like to tell folks that we are a regional planning agency. We serve the four counties around Columbia, so that's Richland, Fairfield, Newberry, and Lexington. And we, the asset that we bring to the table is our Board of Directors table and our Board of Directors meeting. So as you know, Fairfield County has voting seats at the table of the Council of Governments, and our mission is to try to address issues that go beyond regional jurisdictions and individual jurisdictions. The main thing that we do is we serve as a conduit between federal government programs, state government programs, and then the local governments. And we sit there in the middle. So a lot of what we do, if you go to the next slide, across the state of South Carolina, we are broken up into 10 different planning areas. And we have a range of programs that are organized around those federal and state programs. So the next slide illustrates a little bit what I'm talking about. So this is the primary program areas of the COG. We provide workforce development services, economic development, aging services under the Older Americans Act, transportation planning, planning and local government services, community development, and then, as I mentioned, all of this comes together under the idea of regional communication, coordination, and collaboration. So tying into federal government programs, workforce development, we operate under the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act, so we provide a lot of services related to developing the workforce, which also ties into economic development, which we provide services under the Federal Economic Development Administration. And the aging services that we provide are under the Older Americans Act, so we provide social services to the aging community in that four county area. So just to highlight on a couple of the things that illustrate direct services that we're providing in Fairfield County, those aging services, we provide a lot of in-home care, home-assisted meals, delivered meals. We work with the Fairfield County Agency on aging, and we help bring those direct services to the seniors in the community. Working with, I'll talk specifically about economic development and community development in a minute, but I also wanted to mention transportation, because that's one of the big program areas that we operate under. So the Federal Highways Administration, all of the federal dollars for transportation planning that come from our federal gas tax, come to the state of South Carolina through SCDOT, and then come through our agency for both the urban and rural planning areas to help guide how we're going to prioritize investments around transportation. So the Board of Directors and all of our committees work to try to help figure out how to spend that money and to do long-range planning to help us figure out where those investments need to be made. Let's be good, the next slide. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about CDBG. We've been working with this program for a number of years, and this is a federal program administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorized under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. The objectives of this program are to benefit low and moderate income persons, aid communities in the elimination of slum and blight, and address urban community needs which pose a general health and safety hazards or threats to public health and safety. So in the Midlands area of the Fairfield and Newberry County are under the state CDBG program, so we are a competitive process with all of the other areas in the state that don't get funds directly from HUD. Richland County, Lexington County, and the City of Columbia are all entitlement districts, so they get their own pot of money to work from. Each year, the state program, which is operated under the South Carolina Department of Commerce, gets an annual allocation of funds that then go to local governments through a competitive grant process. This year, Department of Commerce had about $18.4 million spread across their different programs, and the largest share of that is for infrastructure-type projects, but for water, sewer, drainage, and then they also operate a community enrichment and neighborhood revitalization program. The cycles, just so y'all are aware, for grant applications through the state program, the infrastructure projects are in the spring, so that was, those were just recently awarded. And then the fall round is for those community enrichment and neighborhood revitalization projects. And we're currently working with the county and the town of Ridgeway to try to identify some projects that we can pursue for that fall grant round. One of the big things that we do through the CDBG program at the COG is that we have a separate regional planning grant from the Department of Commerce through their annual allocation that allows us to work directly with those non-entitlement communities to develop project ideas and to meet all of the HUD requirements to be able to be eligible for applying for those grants. And so we're working directly with Fairfield County this year and last year to try to generate project ideas and make sure that we are understanding the community needs and so we can direct those resources towards meeting those needs. Recent state CDBG projects that were awarded in the four county area, the City of Newberry Water and Sewer Upgrades just wrapped up. That was about a three-year project. The Windsboro Sewer Transmission Line Project was a huge project that is just now wrapping up as well. And we were recently awarded this last spring round a grant for the town of Whitmire to do some water upgrades along Church Street. Next slide. This map here shows you, one of the, the CDBG program is, it's to meet its objective of helping low and moderate income populations. In order for a project to be eligible for funding, you have to demonstrate that it benefits 51 percent or more low or moderate income population. And so this map shows those areas using census data of the county that meet that 51 percent or more low and moderate income threshold. This doesn't mean that a project can't be awarded outside of that area, but if we are pursuing a project that is not automatically 51 percent or more, we have to do community surveying. So those are some of the things that we're working with county staff on right now to try to identify some projects. Next slide, please. Next program I wanted to briefly mention was Economic Development Administration. This is a program through the U.S. Department of Commerce, and it is designed to provide assistance to distressed communities for economic development-related projects. They have a number of projects geared towards providing investments in infrastructure to help create jobs, retain jobs, and to, a lot of that is geared towards infrastructure-type projects. One issue with Economic Development Administration grants is that it's a 50-50 match, but that can go a long way if you're looking at some very capital-intensive types of projects geared around industrial parks and those types of things. So one of the things I just wanted to mention briefly about this is one of the regional planning projects that we do every year related to EDA program is we have to develop a comprehensive economic development strategy. And so we work with the economic development professionals in Fairfield County and our other three counties to try to identify all of the priorities for economic development and the types of projects that we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to be competitive and resilient. And one of the important parts of this is that we're coordinating it with all of the other planning processes and projects that are going on around the region. So the last thing that I wanted to talk about, if you go to the next slide, next slide, is the 208 Water Quality Management Planning. So this is another federal program under Section 208 of the Clean Water Act that Central Midlands Council of Governments works in. So this was enacted in the late 1970s after the Clean Water Act was passed by Congress, and it allocated federal funding for big water and sewer infrastructure projects. In order to be eligible for that funding, you had to develop a regional plan that showed how those investments were going to be made. And so since the 1970s, we've been working with it to develop and maintain this water quality management plan. Next slide, please. So the important pieces of this is that the COG is the state-designated Regional Water Quality Management Planning Agency, and the purpose of this plan is to provide a regional planning framework primarily for sewer infrastructure investments. And this is tied into state law to where that DEHEC cannot issue a permit for any kind of construction related to sewer infrastructure unless it's determined to be in accordance with this plan. So this regional plan that we maintain at the COG is tied to any types of changes related to sewer infrastructure that the county is interested in making. So if the county is working with the town to expand sewer treatment capacity, that has to come through the COG in order to be able to get approved through DEHEC and EPA's approval process. One of the things that we do as a part of that is that we work with all of the regional sewer providers so that if an investment in one county requires any kind of changes to water quality parameters in the Watery River or the Broad River, we can help bring everybody to the table to make sure that we're doing everything we can to coordinate that across the region. So if you go two slides down for me, I just wanted to show you, this is the map under Section 208 of the Clean Water Act. It specifies public management agencies that are responsible for making the decisions related to sewer service, and the geographic areas under the law are defined in that plan. So this is a map of the public management agencies in Fairfield County. And you'll see that the county has essentially jurisdiction around the outer edges, Ridgeway being a sewer provider, and the town of Windsboro have large areas around their existing infrastructure. But the idea is that as we move forward to developing county-wide water and sewer services that we can help coordinate that across the county and make sure that it's in compliance with the plan. So the last slide, I think, has my contact info. And just to close, before I take any questions, just to highlight a couple of the other things that we've been doing, working directly with the county over the past year, we helped, working with a planning commission to update the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, we worked on the Windsboro Sewer Project. We've worked, we're working currently to try to develop project ideas for both CDBG and EDA, and we've been working with DEHEC through our transportation planning program to coordinate pedestrian planning activities around the town of Windsboro. So we look forward to continuing to work with Fairfield County over the coming years and just want to make sure you're all aware of all the things we do and that we're here to help in any capacity we can as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Sprouse. We appreciate the presentation. Any council members have questions, comments? Mr. Taylor?
No, thank you, Gregory.
Thank you again, we appreciate it.
Next up, I have Ms. Jennifer Stevens here to give council a quarterly 4-H report.
Good evening.
And thank you to the council for an opportunity to share information about the 4-H program here in Fairfield County. Excuse me. I have provided a more detailed report to the council to review at your leisure. This evening, I would just like to give a few highlights of the 4-H program, especially our participation in the state 4-H programs. We continue to partner with Fairfield School District, the Camillion Learning Center, the Midlands Theme School, the Barclay School, Majestic Academy, and others to provide programming in healthy lifestyles, natural resources, STEM, leadership, agriculture, and personal development. We are also now focusing on community service within the community. We believe that this is very important to our youth. Our latest community service program was making dog toys for the animal shelter, and we want to thank the Fairfield County Animal Shelter staff for being so welcoming for our contributions. We're excited to announce our new partnerships with the Girl Scouts and with Junior Achievement of the Midlands. You'll be hearing more about that in the future. We have big plans for the county. We are very proud to say that youth from Fairfield County have been participating in many, many South Carolina state 4-H programs. This is a big deal. Some of those programs are 4-H Ambassador Program, the 4-H Healthy Lifestyles Youth Summit, the 4-H Engineering Challenge, the 4-H Garden Project, the 4-H Rabbit Project, the 4-H Goat Project, 4-H Senior Weekend, South Carolina 4-H Club Camps, 4-H Legislative Day, 4-H State Congress. We have two students that will be leaving on Wednesday to go to 4-H State Congress. We're very proud of them. One of them's here tonight. The National Youth Makers Conference and the 4-H Pickney Leadership Conference. Now, this year, Fairfield County 4-Hers have really exceeded themselves and exceeded other counties by, again, having six students selected to attend the Pickney Leadership Conference. This is the second year that we had six students that were selected to attend. We also had one of our students from last year, Gerald Lawhorn, who was asked to return this year as a junior counselor. This invitation is given only to those that show tremendous leadership skills, and just, we're so proud of Gerald. That is a big deal. So if you see him around in the county, please congratulate him for the great work he's done in leadership. Each student selected to attend the conference was asked to write an essay on leadership. Tonight, I brought with me Antoine Chambers to share a portion of his essay. Antoine moved here from another state two years ago and joined 4-H as a means to get involved in the community and in school activity. Today, two years later, he is an ambassador, and you guys will see how sharp he looks when he comes up. He is an ambassador for 4-H and has been involved in many 4-H activities to include the Fairfield Central High School 4-H Leadership Team that went to the State House in March of this year. I introduce you to I introduce you to you, Antoine Chambers, to just say a few words to you and his mother, Gwen Chambers. Gwen, stand up. This is Antoine's mother, Gwen Chambers.
I'd like to share my essay with you all that got me accepted into the Clemente Pickney Leadership Program that I'm looking forward to attending. The most powerful leadership tool you have is your own personal example. This quote was said by one of the most famous Yankee baseball players ever, Derek Jeter. I use this quote as a motivator and to pull out my inner strength when I have to take the lead. For example, when I have to be the responsible person and take charge in big situations and lead by example. Being in high school is a challenge. This is why it's very important as a student, I try to do my best to make good decisions for my future. I had to overcome some of my challenges by becoming a better decision maker. For example, taking my education more seriously, being more engaged and advocating for myself. By doing these things, it makes me feel better about myself and knowing that I'm making a positive impact among my peers. So while I'm maturing and preparing for the real world, I will continue to search for avenues that will lead me in the right direction. With this being said, I feel that the Pickney 4-H, 4-H Leadership Program will be very beneficial to my future. Thank you.
We're very, very proud of Antoine, and I think he speaks a little bit louder when he's with his friends, but I think you guys, I think you all got the gist of it, but what we want to say is that we're growing leaders here in Fairfield County. And that's one of the benefits of being involved in 4-H. Research shows that more children return to their communities to serve and to be of service to their communities after they've been involved in 4-H. 4-H continues to thrive, but we need your help. We need volunteers, we need program space. We're more than happy to serve in the community any way impossible. We'll come to your church, we'll, we'll come to wherever we need to come to let you know more about our program and to get folks involved. A special thank you to the council for your support and for your continued belief in 4-H. That means so much to us to know that you still believe in what we do. Special thank you to Councilman Smith for your assistance in helping us get youth to Pickney Leadership. We really appreciate it. We appreciate everyone's support. Remember, 4-H makes the best better in Fairfield County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. And Mr. Chambers, thank you as well. Anyone? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to echo that. Thank you for all you do and for all these young people. I think that's great. And Antoine, I understand standing up in front of everybody, that's, that can be nervous, but you're sharp as a tack and dress sharp and I'm proud of you and, and thank you for what all you do.
Yes, we love the green. We love the green. Thank you so much, and thank you for your time.
All right. And just wanted to piggyback on that. Thank you so much for what you do, and I need to give you something.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Anything else, Mr. Taylor?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. No clerk to council's report tonight. We're down the second public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
We have six to speak tonight. First, Ms. Linda Haslett speaking on the Lions Club International Exchange Students.
Good evening. I'm Linda Haslett, part of District Six, and I have with me tonight four of the exchange students here for the Lions International Exchange Program that is taking place. Every year, in addition to vision testing and scholarships and giving away, helping those that need glasses, get glasses, and other services for the Lions, we also participate in South Carolina with the exchange students throughout the world. This year, South Carolina has taken six, and I'm proud to tell you that Fairfield County has, excuse me, we, no, I have six, we have six in our county, in Fairfield County, but there's 18 in the state this year that are housed throughout the entire state. This, for the first two weeks, I have these four girls living with me, and Mr. Dove will have two boys living with him. He could not be here tonight because he has to go to the airport and pick up the last one from Poland. He has a Poland and Belgium this year. And each of my girls would like to address y'all and tell you a little about themselves or their countries. And with me tonight, I'm going to only do first names because I'm doing good with that right now. And the order, they're going to be speaking will, will be Ella is from Finland, then I have Veronica, and she's from the Czech Republic, then Maria Clara, who is from Brazil, and Ida Marie is from Denmark. So each girl will speak briefly. Thank you.
Mrs. Davis, thanks you for that.
Hello, you all. I'm Ella Rosa Jefina Mantisala from Finland, and I'm really glad to be here today. I'm 16 years old, and I'm in high school. My mother language is Finnish, and I'm also studying Swedish, English, and German in school. And my family has a sailing boat, and at winter, we go downhill skiing to our winter cottage. I play tennis, and when I grow up, I would like to become a teacher in high school. And I have little sister, mom, and dad in my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you that you gave me the chance to speak and tell you something about me and my country. My name is Veronica Popletova, and I'm from Czech Republic. It's right in the middle of Europe. My mom is a judge, my father is a manager of a bank, and I have an older brother, and he's 28. I'm 16, and I'm studying high school. I'm studying business academy, and I really like it. One day, I want to have my own business or be an accountant. And I came to America to, to learn English, to, to be better in it, and to meet new people that are nice to me, like Linda and Bill, and to, to know new culture and something like that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Maria Clara. I'm 15 years old, and I'm from Brazil. Brazil is located at South America, and our mother language is Portuguese. I live in the south of Brazil, in the state of Paraná, and my city is Guarapuava. I live there with my family, my mom, who's a judge, my father, who's a public server, my brother, 11, he's 11 years old, and my 17-years-old sister. I'm, I'm participating in this exchange program because even though I've come to U.S. before, I wanted to learn more about the American lifestyle and your culture, and thank you all for welcoming me in your county and giving me the chance to speak.
I'm Ida from Denmark, Ida Marie Lorenzen. It's a pleasure to meet you all. Very a pleasure, pleasure. I have a mom and dad. My dad died last year of cancer, so he's not here anymore, but. And my mom, she's working with the ambulance, she's, she's driving the ambulance. And I have two older brothers, the one is 20 and the other is 21. In my spare time, I play handball and go to fitness, and I have this sport with my mom. We play, it's a handball, and, and I'm 16, and it's a very big pleasure to meet you all and to speak in front of you all, so. And I'm living with Linda and Bill in the Lions Club, and they're very sweet with me, for me. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Randy Sisk, and he's speaking on the economy.
Good afternoon, council, Mr. Smith, Ms. Goins, happy birthday, council, administration. Dr. Garrett in the back and I have started Midstate Technical Institute. We are committed to Fairfield County, the economics of Fairfield County, our towns, and our communities. Let's look at some of Fairfield County. A few years ago, we lost our Main Street due to Mount, uh, excuse me, to Walmart. Walmart left, and leaving us with very little. We lost the reactors. Where that's going to go, who knows? We lost our mill, 300 and some odd employees. Do you agree that our county's in sad shape economically? Economically only, that's all I'm talking about. Midstate Technical is committed to bringing our people and our jobs back to Fairfield County, our towns, and communities. You ask how? Dr. Garrett has a long history of helping people write their business plans, working with their financial plans, going to the banks, working with the banks to get the funding for the businesses, working with the business as it grows. Let's judge commitment for a minute. I've been working on this for some year, little over a year at my own dime. Haven't asked for anything, don't want anything. Dr. Garrett has moved here on his own dime, little over 10,000, I would guess probably closer to 12,000 to 15,000 on his own to help Fairfield County. Dr. Garrett leads by example. His wife has opened a business here on Main Street, an antique store. So are you, each one of you, are you committed to Fairfield County? That's my question. Dr. Garrett, in his past, has opened an average of 30 stores, excuse me, 30 businesses a year. You know, month after month, we hear people up here complaining and talking about the lack of businesses, the lack of Main Street business. The time to stop talking is now. I have brought a professional to Fairfield County, a professional business analyst. The time is now to talk to Dr. Garrett. If you know people who want a business on Main Street or anywhere in the county, the time is to talk to Dr. Garrett. Council, public, we'll be outside after the meeting if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. James McGraw speaking on alarming trend.
To the members of council, administration, I stand before you tonight not as a representative of the United Fairfield, nor a representative of the NAACP, nor the Board of Trustees from the Fairfield Memorial Hospital, but I stand as a concerned citizen of Fairfield County. It appears that there is an alleged pattern of employee intimidation and harassment. The number of lawsuits against Fairfield County and the settlements awarded are alarming. While we don't know the amount of the settlements, one settlement is far too many. Let me speak to the concerns of the many citizens that are present here this afternoon. Just two weeks ago, after the county council meeting, I spoke with Mr. Tim Roseborough, who at that time was a gainfully employed by Fairfield County. In just a matter of days, and not weeks, he was terminated. When I heard this, I was very saddened, as so many others that are here tonight. If you don't find any fault in how this matter was handled, then you should make room for the rest of us up there so we can see what you see. Please don't tell me you have all the facts and the counter procedures was followed. I've been in management nearly all of my working career, and not only that, I've hired many employees from my own businesses. And I know for a fact, there's a right way and there's a wrong way. The law is on the side of the employee and not the employer, and rightly so, because types of untimely decisions like these. Back to the lawsuits. We need to address the work environment that participates, participates all of these lawsuits and addresses the initial cause of incidents. While everyone knows we can't totally avoid lawsuits, we cannot and shall not ignore the circumstances that causes them. We all pay in higher insurance premiums when we repeatedly are defending our management and this administration. Policies and procedures and manuals should be updated to address handling of grievances so the taxpayer not left to pay higher premiums. As I take my seat, I reminded what my pastor recently said. He said, "When you pray, you pray with expectation." And that is also true. When, whatever you do, you stand with expectation. We expect to be heard and be listened to, a concern in this matter.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Shirley Green speaking on the Ridgway Library.
Good evening, council members and administration. Shirley Green, District Two. Haste makes waste. I have ambivalent feelings about the recent transaction regarding the county council's vote to execute a two-year lease on the old Ridgway Post Office property at Palmer and Jones Street for a temporary library site. I understand the due diligence of the library board and Ridgway Council to find a permanent site. I understand the community development block grant request that might be used to fund such a project. Yet I'm concerned about the statements made in the recorded minutes of the special meeting, Fairfield County Council, June 27, 2018, regarding the urgency to execute a lease immediately. A councilman stated the urgency occurred when the owner had received a deposit on the building from another individual, and the councilman then spoke with the owner, who agreed to work with the county if it could act quickly. Is it legal to interfere with an owner-tenant relationship if a deposit was received? Can you emphatically say that no legal impropriety took place? I was informed tonight that the deposit did not constitute a legal contract, and therefore there was no legal impropriety. I certainly hope that that's true. Let's make sure that the library transaction was legally executed. We certainly don't want the county to have legal ramifications concerning the execution or the interference with the contract. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer speaking on reality.
I prepared a speech, I'm gonna forget it. First, I want to say these young ladies who've come to America, welcome. We're happy you're here, and we hope you have a good experience here. And what you see tonight is what we all do, which is making this country great. We have our problems, but we're able to come up and speak to the people who are in charge of the country and our community and tell them our feelings. And when they don't cooperate with us, a couple more of us are going to get up here and tell them, "You better do something about this."
we're always so quick to criticize. I'm quick to criticize. Matter of fact, I like it. I'm good at it. But at the same time, I tell the truth, and that's real important. And if we have the truth and the facts, we can resolve problems. And people don't want to talk about the truth and the facts all in one sentence, it becomes difficult because it's my truth, it's their truth, it's their truth. What we want is resolution. So I'll end this by saying, thank you, council. We appreciate it, and thank you, young ladies, for coming to our country. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright speaking on goal.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. I, too, have a few kudos to pass along very quickly, and it's been a very encouraging night. Jason did a great job in addressing my concerns about some of the ordinances. Very concise, helpful information. You cannot help but be encouraged by what they're doing at the 4H. Great job, guys. Great job. And then also, you cannot help but be encouraged with the Haslits and the Lions Club is doing with some, bringing some great individuals here to, we're learning, we learn from you guys, too. So it's a two-way street, so thanks for coming tonight. Now let's get to the subject at hand that we talked about some time ago, about county's goals for next year. And I've got some for you. Let's start off with manifesting a reduction in the unemployment rate to ensure that we at least improve to thirty-sixth place in unemployment rate of all counties. Right now, we're at forty-six, which is last, you may know. I understand some of the headwinds that we've had, but I think that's a fair goal. And of course, you would then take that goal and cascade it onto Jason and the Economic Development Team. That's how people get motivated. We talked about QBQ, accountability. That's selling accountability. And what better thing could you do specifically than improve our unemployment rate? And that's a modest, a modest suggestion. Also, I'd like to see, and this is a layup for you, you're almost there, you just got to complete the layup, that's to facilitate the continuation and the seamless continuation of the medical services currently offered in the county via the Fairfield Memorial Hospital, and then, of course, the turnover to Providence, and of course, the medical primary facilities housed and on campus with that. And of course, that's too complicated to talk about now, but you guys are almost there. But I would certainly think that that would be a goal that you could check off on your list and say, "Look, we got this done. We got the unemployment down, and we got the medical facilities completed in a seamless fashion." Additionally, I would like to see us initiate a county initiative, a county government initiative, a formal county government initiative with all department leads and heads to improve customer service without adding costs. What a great deal that would be for everybody in the county. And no one knows how to make their departments more efficient and add more services than the department leads now. Now, this is just a few of the laundry list of goals that I have for the county, so this will be a continuing series to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
We're now down to county council time. Any council members have anything? Mrs. Goins?
Mr. Chair, would like to say again to our 4H, the young man from 4H, thank you so much. This is one of the things that touched my heart and my desires, to see our young people grow up, mature, and be good leaders. We are seniors, our time, our season is kind of at a certain level, and it's your time now. I'm proud of you, the young ladies coming to visit. I am so proud of you. You're going to be the beginning of an influx of our, our community. You don't know it yet, but from you, others are going to come, and you're going to help grow this community. But to all of you, keep doing what you're doing. Keep being strong, resilient, stay focused, and thank you so much for who you are. To the Haslits, thank you for opening your hearts and your home to others. To the 4H community, and I have to say it like that, all of the leadership, thank you so much for what you're doing to help better Fairfield County.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Anyone else? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I'll echo that. I'm glad I don't have to pronounce all you girls' names because I know I couldn't do it, but I'm proud of y'all for coming and getting up here and speaking, and I'm proud of all of y'all, and Ms. Stevens again, and Antoine, what a great job y'all are doing. And again, the, just to speak a second on the library, I know that the county has been down there working, getting the building cleaned up, and it's moving ahead. Maybe Jason will have more to tell about it at the next meeting. But also, you do know that this didn't just start in the last, this was months ago when the talks started, and they went and looked at the building, back and forth and back and forth. So we were just a little, I was a little bit surprised they didn't, the owner didn't contact the county prior to that deposit. But we had nothing, I mean, that was her choice because it failed so many times with her lease agreements that people didn't last there, and that was totally on the owners to decide that the county would be a better long-term source for the lease than whatever the other one was. That was totally on our choice there, so, but anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to executive session. We have, I think, six items for executive session tonight. Item A, legal matter, update on litigation against SCENE in reference to the abandoned VC Summer New Nuclear Project. A proposed contractual matter, discussion regarding the potential purpose of real property identified as Fairfield County TMS Number 126-03-01-001-000. A personnel matter, discussion regarding the annual review of the county administrator and clerk to council. Economic development matters, update and discussion of potential contracts. Contractual matter, discussion of funding in accordance with the county's contract on emergency room services with Providence Life Point and Fairfield Memorial Hospital. And a contractual matter, update on potential water and sewer authority agreement. Do we have a motion at this time to go into executive session for those purposes?
We'll move.
It's been moved and properly seconded. The council go into executive session for the purposes as stated. Those in favor? Those opposed? Seven to zero. Council's now in executive session. Thank you.